Welcome and thank you for attending the June 1st, 2023 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair, and I will now start this meeting by introducing and accounting for my fellow board members that are with us here today. When you hear your name, whether it's correctly spelled or incorrectly spelled, say aye. Mr. Avery. Ms. Brophy. Ms. German. Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinle. Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halipka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you all. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Bensley, is there any changes to the tentative agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the May 25th, 2023 email, you received draft minutes from the May 18th meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the draft minutes? If so, no corrections? Thank you. Can I have all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First on today's agenda is a brief introduction of the Department of Planning's partners. Please welcome Ms. Gagne Chief of the Community Planning Division to introduce her staff.
Good evening, Chair. Very good members. So we are here. So thank you for the opportunity to introduce the team. Because of CZMP coming up, we are divided by district. And we have all seven district planning, area planners here today to introduce ourselves. I'm just going to let them go ahead and introduce each of them. And we can start with District 1, Sophie Kotska. And then District 2, we have Alex LaHann.
I'm Megan Benjamin, District 3, and I work with Abigail Rogers.
Hi, I'm Daphne Bailey. I am the District 4 Planner.
And because we don't have a District 5 planner, I'm going to be looking at these five.
What about Dave over there?
David is District 6. Well, thank you for the opportunity. This is it. And can we, in exchange, also know who the district, who the planning boards are?
I would want District 1. I would Perlow, County Executive Appointment.
Emily Brophy, County Executive Appointment.
Mark Heckman, District 2.
Wayne McGinnis, District 3.
Kathy Wolfson, District 4. Nancy Hafford, County Executive Appointment.
Scotta Lofte, Executive Appointment.
Greg Johnson, Executive Appointment.
Chief Hattan, Executive Appointment.
Yeah, I read District 6.
And thank you to the wonderful planning staff here, that over there, for all the work that you've done on the master plan and everything else. But I want to thank my board members for your service to this commission. You've, you've been tremendous. And the work I've seen in the comments you've put in for the master plan. I really appreciate all the time that you've spent on it. And thank you, Gagne. So do any of you have any questions for Ms. Gagne or staff at this time? Nope. Okay, next on our agenda is deliberation on the Master Plan 2030. This item is first introduced, was first introduced to the board on May 4th, 2023. At a virtual meeting hearing, it was conducted, and a virtual meeting hearing was conducted on May 18th, 2023. Tonight, we have an opportunity to discuss the plan and a vote is scheduled for our next meeting on June 15th. I would now like to turn the Department of Planning to, for additional comments and information to the boards on this issue. Mr. Lafferty, the floor is now yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, everybody. Let me echo the Chair's comments, and I want to thank all of you for the diligence that you've put into the work as a volunteer, one of the most important groups, I think, in the county. And also thank those of you who were able to submit some comments and questions so that we could better prepare for today. Today's is, as the Chair said, a work session to review and discuss the draft master plan that you received on May 18th. There will be no votes tonight, but what we do ask you to do is if it's possible to submit any written motions that you intend to submit for the May, excuse me, June 15th meeting, if you're able to submit any of those in advance, that helps us better prepare and I hope to be as efficient as possible as we work through this, this story map and document. As you know, we're here not just to talk about a couple of issues, but as we've tried to indicate, all the, the entire plan really is for discussion. The sequestered items that are on the chart that was one in front of you, but also sent to you, are items that we received in advance that certainly we're going to walk through as well. As you have heard previously in the presentation, this draft document is a result of hundreds of inputs, not only during virtual meetings that started more than two years ago, but even leading up to that point, staff had gone through numerous previous community plans, had looked at items that had been relevant and important in previous planning efforts, and also then tried to capture from each of the public meetings, sort of those items that sort of fit into a plan as opposed to perhaps being more localized issues that are going to be hopefully dealt with in small area plans going forward. So the, the intent or hope tonight is to walk through this chart with the various items, and then both Amy Mante and Jen Meacham, who really took the lead in bringing this document and the story map to you today, will, along with me, answer whatever question and provide you. Hello, right there. Yes. Very weird. The, the plan structure, as has been explained before, really came from professional guidance from the American Planning Association and its Sustaining Places document, using other professional planning concepts, including the idea of retrofitting. ...document as we plan to have, which can be implemented for a decade. Last thing I'll remind you of is that this is not a zoning document. Comprehensive zoning comes after the master plan, and so that's the time when individual parcels and properties will be examined as whether or not the zoning is correct to help implement the master plan, as well as to implement other goals that the executive in the unit set. So the draft plan is really in your hands. It is now for the planning board and for all of you as residents of the county and to lend your expertise and insights as to how this can best guide where we're going over the next decade. And I again want to thank you for the input you provided. And I also want to give kudos to the two people who used the chart to respond to the sequester request, which helps make it easy. Thank you, Ms. Brophy and Mr. Heckman, appreciate that. Now, in all seriousness, all of you really, I know, are very attentive to the significance of this, this time. We look forward to the conversation today and in providing answers or clarity if we can, and then looking forward to the vote in two weeks. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. I'm going to do a little test real quick. Sure. Is having this on what was causing the, I turned it off when you were talking. Okay, okay, just that we're having some technical issues this afternoon, of course. So if it starts doing that again, I'm going to turn this back off. So, and Chair members of the planning board, I guess our thought for the structure of this meeting was to start with, you know, sort of the things that you had sent ahead of time, so we had some place to start as far as the comments. We'd go through the comments, which again, you have in front of you, just to kind of put forth, I know some of the comments are put, were given to us by planning board members who aren't here, but just to kind of start a discussion. And then any questions or, you know, comments you have along the way, it was just sort of a format to give us some guidance for, for discussion this afternoon. So if there are no other issues with that, I'll go ahead and get started going through the chart. Okay? So the first section we were going to go through as far as comments go is the overview. And the first comment we have listed was from Planning Board member Katie Panero. There was a quest, a request or a comment from her to add some language to the overview, clarifying the purpose of the core retrofit areas and confirming development elsewhere will still be permitted. So she proposed adding a paragraph, starting with several mandates to add Section 324102A of the Baltimore County Code indicates that development shall conform to the master plan and any adopted community plans. To avoid confusing, confusion about the role and implementation of master plan, purpose of the master plan is to encourage and even incentivize growth and development within those areas being most suitable for retrofitting, the core retrofit areas. However, it should be made clear that growth and development may occur anywhere within the Erdel and in certain areas outside the Erdel where zoning is permitted. Incentivizing growth in certain areas does not mean growth outside those areas is inconsistent with the master plan priority. And her basis for that was any reference limitations on the development within the Erdel should be removed, redevelopment in selected areas should be encouraged through prioritization and incentives, and clear language should be added and repeated throughout the plan that growth and development may occur anywhere within the Erdel and in certain areas outside the Erdel where zoning would permit it. In relation to that comment from her, this, there are a few recommendations in here from staff. We had a similar recommendation if the planning board was, you know, willing to entertain it. Find it. It is the first one in the growth framework methodology, GF4. We suggested adding something similar, that development activity in the core retrofit areas, like all development will require the requisite infrastructure to support this new. Page 2 and 3. While these core areas must, must be the primary focus for development investment in this, this decade, development activity is permitted outside these areas and will likely continue based on market and opportunities. So I just wanted to draw the connection between those two that we had recommended a similar edit as well. So are there any questions or comments about, I know she's not here, about her recommendation there? That you have for us? I read the proposed edit is in the fourth column, what we would recommend changing. We're not editing the, we're not editing the document until there would be a vote. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Which, which we curl on the 15th. If this is actually reduced to a motion, then they, to add to the document.
Comments? Questions?
It's not really a question, it's a comment. Oh gosh, are we going to do this? I'll use my own voice. I thought the format was...
I have a question, I guess, I'll look at that.
Read through it.
So that means we got to read all of those to make sure that we're okay with all of that in addition to the...
And the majority of the links that we tried to include were things that are already adopted, you know, county plans, county reports. They've already been, you know, they exist out there on the website now.
One of the comments that was just leaving, hopefully here, we're getting was that the plan was required, the plan appointment, any hidden material behind the links. They posted that as a PDF, we have all the hidden links. Are you thinking to move?
Not sure what links are hidden. Do they mean, when they said hidden, hidden material, do they mean things that you have to link to get to? So it's not, I don't know anything that's hidden. We try to very, try to be very, you know, comprehensive in, in, you know, linking things as many times as it showed up. You had the same document, so you didn't have to go searching around for something.
Howard and I had the same thought. Well, I, I guess I have a concern from many people. I turn 70 tomorrow. I don't have the skills or my son resumes as soon as his computer and hair does. I can't find something or can't do something. Josh come, show me what the county has for us. I guess I think that there's an awful lot of people that have the ability to do that with their computers. Other people don't. Many of us, the last time, 10 years ago, maybe, you know, the last time, sat there with big binders and all the paper in front of us, and I just had, like savings of trees here in the family, and I have it. But I think that a lot of people have difficulty following all of the links. And in my business, everything we do is hyper. So that, I'm taking love, and my staff is very taking love, and the people we deal with are taking love. There are many people that just don't have those technical skills to do it, and I think that's the concern, that we're not sure what's hidden if we want, okay? It's not hidden, it's there, it's not, you know, we have people who call us, how do you click on it? How do you click on it? Is it once or twice as this, or you have to hit to it? I think that's what's concerned a lot of people in the community that we've heard from. We say that you all can deal with it here in the planning board, but again, we're trying to make sure retired county is comfortable before we vote as a whole.
Well, I guess it sort of goes to the, some of the same issues of, I'm just trying to tie it is. This document will get referenced in the future in legal arguments. So if it's the document plus all the links, of all the hyperlinks, there's a lot of stuff to do, to make sure that everything is protected, you know, that people can come out. And legal arguments, people will point to something, it says on this hyperlink, something different to have to do. So it's a lot of stuff to have to do. So it's one of my questions, then would be, have you talked to any sort of county legal staff about, well, the legal staff has been talking to this, but all of the different type of links. Plans change or something changing, how does that get handled? And it's sort of the flip side of it, being a living document, is that something might change? Well, if the bicycle plan gets changed or something else gets changed by the county, does that become part of the new master plan?
It does now. If, if a community plan is updated or pedestrian and bicycle plan gets updated, then it, it is still part of master plan, it's just a newer version of what was adopted in 2010 or 2020, whenever it is in place. Because that's, that's part of the adoption by the county councils, it becomes an amendment to the master plan.
So, so what I hear, I'm working on a question, a question to, I mean, in the past, have these documents, the master plan, they would view that legal department would give us efficiency before it goes to the county council or after it comes to the county? Then it goes to what, you said? So, the document needs instruction to navigate it. Nothing is hidden to happen today, but just instructions of how to navigate it. Not correct?
To my knowledge, it's not reviewed by the Office of Law prior to being submitted to the county council, or has not been historically, to put it that way.
You have a soft voice. When referring to something in this, can you tell us what page we're on so we can zero in on that? My, one of my former observations as a teacher, I had to make sure everybody in the back of room could hear what I was saying. This means you have to elevate your voice a little bit. One common complaint I have with speakers here, now, the young fellows can hear that very well.
Thank you.
But you have to speak in a public voice, a little louder.
What did you say? Any other questions right now before Ms. Matty moves?
So, the county regulations that are posted online, don't they include hyperlinks?
Many, many of them do, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Sure. All right, so the next, I'm still on page one, is from Planning Board member Emily Brophy. The Story Map website is quite cumbersome to navigate, and I've had a lot of technical issues when accessing it. I believe this is brought up by the public, during a public hearing session as well. I understand the need for having bring the document to easily update, but having an easier view, easier to view format would be helpful. I encourage more public input if the master plan document was easier to access. And that's a bit of what we just discussed, but is there something else that you wanted to add or address?
So I think the reason I really brought that up was, I mean, clearly I can navigate a website, but even I had technical issues when things were loading, especially the different maps as you scroll down, like different colors started appearing and started disappearing. And I think it's important to realize that while we did get public input via email online and virtually, there's still a lot of people that don't have access to digital. And obviously, the county executive department, I know, they go by, and, you know, I applaud that, but I don't think you're going to reach a lot of the hard-to-reach demographic by moving to a Story Maps platform like this. So, I mean, I agree with Ms. Wolfson, I mean, I think it's great because it is a living creative document, and as you're editing, things can be updated, but I don't think that you're going to get the input from that demographic that you guys have been missing for so many years by going to this type of platform. That was really, was that correct?
Comments on this one? All right. So now page 2, we are moving to the vision framework. So I've tried to reference as I can, so hopefully you can follow along. The livable belt environment, goal 1, action 1. Create a redevelopment framework that reinforces the existing urban rural demarcation line and focuses on redevelopment strategies through community planning policies. The staff wanted to put on the table an option to add and housing after redevelopment in this action, based on public comment at the hearing. I don't know if there are any comments or thoughts about that one? I don't know if there are any comments or thoughts about that one from the board?
I'm fine with adding the half thousand. I guess I have a more terrible question. Did the county ever decide, council or whatnot, that the Earl is like set in stone and should never be moved? I've been trying to do some reading on the history of the Earl of the town. Like at one time, the board that it would be, oh, I actually saw. My impression of the Earl of the town was in other places. There's some mechanism in place to theoretically ask, you know, is it still meeting the purposes? We seem to have adopted, you know, the butthole constantly hearing, no, this is the Earl. You can touch it a little bit, but for the most part, nothing moves. Is that official policy or is that the sort of unofficial, this is how we operate? I think of it right there. It's sort of any, the very first goal was like, no, this is how we operate.
Well, I think this in part reflect, well, you have a couple of questions embedded in there, I think, Mr. Lupka. One is that, to my knowledge, there's not been an official policy saying every decade, every 20 years, 15 years, whatever, that the boundary of the Earl will be revisited or reviewed for its appropriateness. So I don't know that there's any statement either in code or in the policy to that effect. This does reflect another county executive's position that the Earl should remain in place. And as we know from public testimony, the majority of the testimony we heard about the Earl was to retain it the way it was. And although I know that in talking with Mr. Warren other times, I know there's some sentiment for moving it, there really is a commitment to retaining it now because of the commitment also to preservation of the lands outside the Earl.
I guess I just feel that as some of these other things, if we have enough process in place for ever analyzing. I don't know on this board enough, most people don't want anything to ever change. So not moving the Earl ensures public safety. Not developing stuff tends to be public safety. As I bring up later, I have confirmed about these small area plans, basically say, don't move anything. That's sort of what we said. But in fact, I don't know if that's necessarily the best for one Earl of the town. We are running out of space on the county. The Baltimore region is not growing that rapidly. Maybe if we're going to say that as a sort of our point of view is more big enough than a few, you know, sort of hit a max and we're finding that's okay, we should say that. But to sort of say that we're doing, that we're allowing development, but not really does any time you try to do something, it's not going to work. Just as there were proposals in this plan to do other changes to sort of the process. I was just curious, you know, why is there no process to do? According to one document, I think like 1980, the last time that he said anything about the Earl, seven years ago. It just seems interesting that we don't even have a thing. It could be that it stays the same, but you know, shouldn't there be some process for the evaluation? Some cycle, getting impression of that other places tend to have.
So Scott, just as what you're saying, would it be appropriate to recommend at least, take a look at it after every 10 years? What to put in the number of years together? Is there, is, is a liability that you're subject to revision, depending on the needs of that? So can we make changes to this allowance? What is the change to be, you mean, if you pay up that day?
But I think what you're saying is reflecting what Mr. Lupka said, that as we propose other changes such as comprehensive zoning map process, that if the board feels that the Earl should be reviewed on a periodic basis, whatever that would be, that could be a recommendation as part of the land use processes that are described here. If you want to add one, remove one, I mean, that's again, the purview of the board before the document goes to the county council. So that could be a motion, that could be amendment introduced at the next meeting, if that's the sentiment of the board.
That, that, I agree. They go so low this issue, it's a different pocket, you don't think the unit's not that hard. Don't you vote so different? Try to make it flexible enough for some day revision in the future. And I recommend that you.
One thing then, something I guess the board to do here is whenever you have recommendations, when we have our next meeting, think about what you, what you want to address and how you would like it addressed. And then we can vote on each issue. But it's very important that you write down clearly what you think and how you want it addressed.
And to address your area question, I would point out that in 2008 and 2012, the Earl was moved by 160 acres in Councilmatic District One and replaced resource conservation two and six. So there are mechanisms. It's called the CZMP. And there's, so there are mechanisms to move the Earl.
So can we make it clear?
It is clear. It's clear in the regulations that that's how it works.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, Ms. Manteg? We're still on page two, under vision framework, levelable built environment, goal one, action one. There's an additional comment from planning board member Emily Grophy. Let's see. She's just saying here that there should be a change to this action because redevelopment of property can be as costly as building new as such. The county should have procedures, grants, loans and other resources in place to entice property owners to redevelop or improve properties. Extending the CEZMP process would impede redevelopment and hinder the school. So do you have any other comments or explanation on that one? We really didn't, you know, you didn't really mention an addition or change, but that was just sort of your, your thoughts on that one. So any comments or questions on that one? I know you just talked about it from the staff suggestion. Pearl.
From the planning staff, I guess I'd like to maybe hear why you feel that it should be every 10 years, but not every four years. I've got that on 16, 17 years here. I personally think it is, it works in Baltimore counties. I find that other counties that I'm active in, involved in, when they do it every eight years or 10 years, it's taken a long time to get the ability to redevelop. You know, maybe in the past a little bit more mall, not sure we have the malls of a rebuilding county. But it takes a very long time to be able to move projects forward and you're already, the approval process is additional six or eight years. But you have to wait to change zoning and then go through the planning process, you could be waiting a lifetime.
Mr. What my, my brief comments would be, one, as all of you know, we can brief CEZMP. It takes an enormous amount of time. And what we have found historically in the department is that it really does delay the ability to work with communities to address the issues that are ever present. Secondly, is we're pretty unique. And that's not to say the county shouldn't be unique. Other, nobody else follows that process. And if we're going to suggest that zoning should follow the master plan, then instead what we're finding is you're flipping the switch and you're having the master plan following the zoning. So the question then as a policy is which should be directing the growth and development of the county? Is it the zoning or is it a bigger, more holistic picture of what the county should become or is or should become really? And I know, you know, philosophically, there's a very opinion about this, but I certainly respect what you're saying, Mr. Pearl. And I think that there's another comment that was suggested about reviewing and revising our out of cycle, our cycle zoning. And maybe that's a mechanism that should be strengthened instead of the CZMP. So I think that's a few of the reasoning, few of our reasons for coming forward and making this recommendation followed really the, follow the CZMP. Have the CZMP follow the master plan as opposed to finding ourselves in, it's actually within a 10 year cycle, you have two CZMPs.
I support his comments and I think that having the public to go through this every couple of years is a lot of strain on their, their activists, activism. And I think that the public in general support a longer space between.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Warren?
Yeah, I, my challenge that I have.
Continue to drive growth to small segments of the population or of our county that are actually smaller than the area inside there. I don't want to be part of driving us all, but I think that would be, that would be quick.
Well, all due respect, Mr. Warren, I guess I would say that the four year cycle has not diminished segregation, has not made housing more affordable, has really not gotten us to the point that you believe, and I think all of us believe we should be as far as having more tangible housing in the county. Four year cycle has not advanced that. So I'm not sure that lengthening the cycle makes it any worse in that regard. So I guess that's where I would challenge you at least.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, but it would be projected since no one's got microphones on.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's all being recorded. That's part of our challenge.
The challenge we have, like the cycle, it's only going to come down. So now you're going to go from a four year cycle to new one, add housing, to a 10 year cycle. The, the challenge would be, we live in a dynamic world. Chat A, whatever, chat B. The world's changing so quickly that I think we should compress some of these things instead of, you know. Have we looked at other, what other, doing what other counties do instead of looking at 10 years? My problem is we're, if we want to say, we want to look at it and review it, I'm okay with that. But just by putting the 10 years in there, without pulling, maybe the pros and cons of it, or looking at other avenues, what other counties do? I, you know, I feel like, but the 10 years in there, everybody's going to think we're going to go in 10 years. I'm not necessarily going to believe that. Now, a lot of things are special. I just want to say, I was going to make a motion, like, get rid of the 10 years and not say, or review the process. And even to the extent that updating the zoning work does, that fits in the big picture. I'm okay with that too. But put in there something that even though we're not saying it's definite, it will work.
I'm sorry, I've got a question in the last CPR.
CZMP.
There were seven projects, affordable housing, that I thought should be approved. Councilman turned them down, they did one in their district. And we've got a consent degree with the government, the federal government. And I'm happier every four years, have another shot to bring up those projects and bring them online that much. And 10 years is way too long. I mean, I'm thinking St. Mark's in Pikesville. I personally was distraught. I think on my religion, on some Jewish condominium owners down the street of Mal, that they said they didn't want this in that project. And if you look at four Weinberg houses in Pikesville, all around them, I was furious. I told councilmen in that district and other councilmen as well, that they would not see my support in the next election unless they got behind affordable housing. Maybe in 10 years, maybe in 15 years, by the time you get through the planning process. That's unacceptable for our county, which is now a minority county.
I, I just want to point out that an out of cycle zoning process is just not fair to communities. I mean, there has to be some predictability there, you know, or would just, communities would just be playing whackham all year after year, month after month of issues. Do they have their comments before?
I, I understand the big underground, I understand. I don't know, I don't compare myself to other counties. Because I'm originally from East Detroit and you look at what they do down there, versatile we do here. I mean, I just think we have to do what's best for our county. And it may mean looking at this a little more closely and determine what needs we have. And not basically it's less more of a store in another county, but what is the need that we have here? What should we do here?
Harp County is a really one that I can really speak to. But I'm maybe vaguely involved, not as much as the planning board. But they're on an eight year cycle right now, too much to decide who they want. And there are, I think, all kinds of problems in Harp County. Nothing happens for eight years. You sit there waiting for that cycle to come. We all have spot zoning that we can do, if we say that was a mistake made and whatever else could we do to get something through. We're going to give it like they here in Baltimore County. All the counties have that. But I just think that as you look at, I can only tell a story in Harp County. We once took a piece of land from nothing to record flat in nine months in 1986. And do that now would take you six to eight years, I think, to really, really make it work again. Same up there. And you're now adding that on to changing with them, that's something, you're looking at a very long time.
I mean, can we have the version to, the version of this, this, other, this, this, this? Just like our wish, our, what we do, and they, because we do that in the county. Now we have a knowledge.
We generally looked at that before and to our knowledge within the country, everyone has a 10 or eight year process. All right. So we're still on page two. This is actually just a little bit of a repeat, but I'll read it anyway because the last one kind of jumped to this. For levelable built environment, goal one, action eight, regarding extending the frequency of the comprehensive zoning map process in four years to 10 years. Councilwoman Grophy just added this comment that the redevelopment of a property can be as costly as building new. As such, the county should have procedures, grants, loans, other resources in place to entice property owners to redevelop or improve properties. Extending the CZMP process would impede redevelopment and hinder the school. So I know we've already discussed this, but if you have anything else you want to add at this point? All right? All right?
And we would agree that we'd like this to develop actually a request redevelopment package, if you will, with loans and grants and tax evasion and whatever it's going to take. And I think that is the next step.
All right. The last one that was submitted ahead of time regarding the levelable built environment was a staff recommendation.
Use opportunities what we have to pursue because many of these shopping centers, I think, about Logan Village Shopping Center in Dundalk, or some of the less than even some of these more than half-empty shopping centers on Liberty Road. You know, if the commercial market is not going to return, we need to find some other valuable use for the community. Having a mix of uses, I think, is something you need to be able to really drill down into. So we're having those conversations all the time, frankly, right now. And part of it came out of the Affordable Housing Work Group and recommendations they have about looking at opening up other zones for housing opportunities. Well, comprehensive zoning is a mapping process. So if the text of the code doesn't, you have to go through the whole county council process to change the text of the code. I mean, just like you'll have to go through the CZMP through the council, but, and we've probably got a little late start on doing that because the text of the code won't, can't be done before CZMP starts. But that's not to say that we can't later examine the text of the code in order to open up more opportunities. But, again, through CZMP, there may be an opportunity to use existing overlays, the Well, I can't, I can't speak to how Ms. Panero got to these recommendations and why she thinks certain things should be included. And I think that, again, goes to a comprehensive zoning issue. We have not heard our economic development people comment that there's an absence of industrial. In fact, we've heard more developers suggest to us that the industrial properties may need to be opened up for residential. So, but, I mean, that's generic, you know, and I'm sure it depends on where it is. Certainly not at TPA, Trade Point Atlantic, but there may be some older industrial that actually needs to be rethought.
All right, I'm on page four. At the very bottom is another recommendation from Planning Board Member Katie Panero. Place types, oh, sorry, place types in the growth framework five, revise the images for the place types and the PDF overview of the place types to be consistent with the above revised definitions or delete them. So, of course, if we made any changes to the place types, we would then update the graphics that go along with them. So are there any other questions about that? Okay, I'm on page five. Growth Framework, Part Five, Place Types. Revise the image in Growth Framework Five that indicates the Lafarge Quarry to include the entire 415 acres. And this came from Planning Board Member Katie Panero. Jim's pulling that up on the map if you needed to see it. Are there any questions about this one? She's not here to answer, and we don't have a basis for change, but that was in the list that she submitted. If they get, yes, it does not include the, revise it to include the entire 415 acres.
Part of it is showing, not reflected necessarily here, which Heckman has special use, other is showing as, I think, connected neighborhood because it's surrounding there.
Established. Place Types, Growth Framework Five. This was a staff recommendation based on public comment at the hearing to include this language into the place types regarding UMBC into the special use. In the southeastern part of the county, University of Maryland Baltimore County has a substantial presence. This highly rated public university is recognized for IT research, innovation, and commitment to diversity and equity. Located on 530 acres west of the Beltway and next to both Catonsville and Arbutus, UMBC has expanded its community outreach and has established a facility with the popular Okomoca Cafe in Arbutus. UMBC is also home to BW Tech at UMBC Research and Technology Park. The university also recently took ownership of the 200-acre Spring Grove property situated north of the current campus. No specific plans have been presented for the site. It also contains state-operated psychiatric services and county-owned homeless person shelter and recreational facilities. That this would be inserted into the special use, it would be given the special use designation. Yeah, yes, based on a public comment at the hearing.
There's a public comment. Steve Whalen made the comment about it, which... But part of it would come down to the definition of special use, which would need to be broadened from what it currently was reflected in the plan, which really had as much of an industrial element, which would obviously need to maybe reflect more of the technology and research. And then, quite frankly, I would think that he would try to utilize that to help promote his own project, as well as other projects in the area. And I know that UMBC is engaged now in a new master planning process with the new president of the university. Don't we, I'm not aware of what they may be looking to do on the Spring Grove property site. As an institution, they have a unique opportunity to really drive a lot of change in that whole area. The fact that they've gotten much more engaged in Arbutus, for instance, I think, shows that they're expanding their, not just footprint, but their engagement that really is going, could make a difference in that whole area. Not me, it's not my dialect.
So still on page five. This is a recommendation that came to us from Mark Heckman. Place Types, Growth Framework Five, for the established neighborhoods, suburban neighborhoods generally consisting of moderate density, predominantly detached, single-family homes. He requested that we modify after single-family homes, add, and small-scale commercial strike that will remain as such for the foreseeable future. The basis for change was that it reflects actual conditions in most neighborhoods and removes a declarative statement about the future of these neighborhoods. Still on page five at the bottom, this came from Planning Board Member Katie Panero. Land Use Processes, Growth Framework Six. Revise the language in Growth Framework Six to eliminate the suggestion to increase the time interval for the comprehensive zoning map process to 10 years. The addition is a little bit lengthy here, so I will read through it. Do you want me to read through it? Have you already went through it?
We've already discussed that.
Okay. So I will not read through it.
Yeah, it fits, obviously, it fits in the growth framework portion as well.
Right, okay. All right. Now, that was like a couple pages. Now we're on page eight. So we've moved to page eight. This is an issue that came from...
I think one of the, one of the items, though, that is a little different is on page seven, where she talks about striking the language about the sequencing. It's on my little page.
Yes, she strikes the section that we talk about, the reference to the recommendation in the efficiency study, and the quote from Director of PAI Pete Gutwold, and realigning the major land use processes, reordering the sequence of decision-making for high overall order.
Which is more than, it's more indifferent than simply striking CZMP as a 10-year or 4-year cycle. And, and one of the challenges, and actually, there was public testimony about this last time, is that by the time we really get the decennial census information and it's useful, it's really like two or three years later. It's not 2020, we really are getting it like in 2022 or 2023. So should you start your work without knowing the real demographic makeup of the county? And so even bumping that back a couple of years after the decennial census information, and then sequencing your capital programming, your, all the other water and sewer amendments and those sort of things. I'll turn to our data person. Didn't they just release some ACS data, or was that more the decennial that they finally got out? to be approved by the council. Oh, yeah. Yep.
I believe we're on page eight at this point. Land Use Processes, Growth Framework Six. This came from Planning Board Member Emily Brophy. Changes to zoning should align with the comprehensive zoning process, thus freeing up staff time. Master plan recommends adjusting the CZMP to 10-year cycle. Again, I think we've probably already touched on this, but I understand the need for adjusting the CZMP process to align with the master plan timeline for consistency and efficiency, but the current cycle zoning change process is cumbersome. Property conditions can change frequently, they're every 10 years, and property owners need to be able to adjust accordingly. I suggest reviewing the cycle zoning change process and frequency if this is adopted. The next one's still on page eight. Land Use Processes, Growth Framework Six. This came from Howard Polo and Todd Warren. It's really just a statement, the plan calls for the frequency of the CZMP to be every 10 years and for further restrictions on the PUD process. This removes two very valuable development tools, tools that are also imperative for redevelopment. Any other comments or questions about that? Right?
And as to...
I think it's still in here somewhere.
And as to the PUD process, there's no recommendation to be away with the PUD process. Question of reviewing it, because there have been a number of questions and concerns, and the fact that the council now is considering revocation of a PUD may suggest that maybe we need to look at the processes that are used for developing PUDs. I'm not really speaking to the resolution to, of just the cause of issues like that that does, I think, raise questions about the value of reviewing the process, not necessarily change the process. It's really about reviewing it to see if the system that we have in place is still appropriate. I think, quite honestly, there's one project that is basically to create one commercial property, one commercial business on a piece of property. Is that what a PUD was intended to do? I think that's, that becomes the question. It's a policy question. What are you trying to achieve with a PUD? Yes, you can get rid of the underlying zoning, and the question that came up with Lafarge and the attorneys that weighed in is that, can you take a residential piece of property and build commercial on it? Well, the language of the PUD code suggests you can, regulations, but there's another analysis that says, no, you can't. So let's take a hard look at how it works. Can we achieve something creative with a different process? And that's the intent, I believe, when it was created, is to be innovative and not be confined by a particular zoning classification. So I think that's really what we're trying to convey here, that we, it's appropriate to review.
Are those developers that are willing to go to certain places in the country, redevelop, take an area that was slums of slums in southeast Washington, turn it into a powerhouse, are they going to come to Baltimore County if they feel like everything can be turned along pretty much anytime the councilman might get elected? Will they, will they invest their money for all the preliminary work if they have the opportunity? I feel like that's, that's here. I just think one of the most...
So we're still on page eight, but this extends to the next page or two. This is a pretty long one, but does relate to the PUD process. Development processes in Growth Framework Seven, to revise the language, remove the language recommending changes to the PUD process. So I'll read through what she's added and changed here. Many of the development manuals used today were created decades ago and need to be updated in order to reflect modern-day development practices. The definition and application process for a TOD needs to be more clearly specified. She suggests striking the planned unit development process. Needs to be evaluated for transparency, clear articulation of eligibility requirements, green benefits, and ensuring higher-quality development. Next down from that, planning unit development process is, she provides, she suggests striking a mixed use. So a plan use, a PUD is a development that may strike combined, proposed residential, recreational, industrial, and/or commercial elements. The approval process for a PUD is similar to that of other land development projects, except that the county council must determine the PUD will achieve substantially higher-quality development than a conventional development. She proposes adding, this determination is made after having received input from county agencies and from the community, following a community meeting and public hearing before the council. Then she proposes striking the section from the purpose of a PUD down to the end. PUDs are only permitted within the urban rural demarcation line, adding, with the ability for council to approve uses and densities not otherwise permitted by the underlying zoning, the PUD process has proven a valuable tool to allow for development and redevelopment in this mature jurisdiction. She then proposes to strike everything below that, all the way down to producing. Okay. Now we're on page 11. These are, let's see, okay. So this is from Planning Board Member Halepka. This was, seems, questions and comments, not necessarily like an action to change wording. The claim is the, claim is that the department has identified the most retrofit-worthy locations throughout Baltimore County using a neutral data-driven process based on a number of geographic, social, and economic determinants. How and why were these 27 metrics identified? What criteria was used to assign the weights? Several criteria overlap on identifying poor places, vulnerable census tract, commercial utilization district, sustainable communities. I'll let Jennifer answer the details of that, but, you know, generally, we were looking at community input, we were looking at the APA references that we have for sustainable places and retrofitting models, and, you know, just with our general staff experience and expertise and what we've seen out in the communities.
But we also, we also had emails and other information, other than people just being on the, on the video. Yeah.
All right. Yep, sure. So the next one is again from Scott, and I think builds on what he had asked previously. All the metrics were combined on this map to give each area inside the Erdel retrofit score. What is an area? Is it a parcel, a block, a block group, a tract? Is there a database that shows the scores for each of the areas? Is there a map? What is the distribution of the retrofit scores? What criteria threshold was used to identify retrofit-worthy locations? How was that threshold set?
And nobody has that intention as a criteria at all. I can guarantee you, nobody has that intention at all. So what we'll do is if you don't find, you can have a conversation about that, we'll move along, and then we'll have a discussion about that.
All right. So we will move past Mr. Haleka's questions. He had some additional questions about 15 minute city concept, just for retrofit area. Just for folks who don't have a copy of this, I thought I would just kind of touch on it. And some questions about the small area plans and that kind of thing. All right. So I will move to the next piece, page 12. Just past the last, sorry, go ahead.
They say to me, they ask the question, what's going to happen in 50 or 100, or possibly the next 10 years? Greenspring Valley, I think most of us have sat on this board for the last 10 or 15 years and said. As it were, if we need water, but is it New York at that point? Is it LA? Is it San Francisco? Because housing now is a million dollars for a little two-bedroom house. So I make them aware that there's nothing in planning, I would think, you know, the G-Learning School, I didn't learn that, but when I studied, but you don't know what it's going to be in the future. We all watch our Star Wars and Star Trek movies and see the cities that they have. Is that 300 years from now? I think that it is a constant change and things have to change based on where you live in the world. Whether it's Beijing that has 12, 15 million people on it, that's like, whatever the numbers are of the cities, Johannesburg that has 9 million versus our city that has 600,000. So I think that you do have to always be thinking further ahead. What we might want to try to maintain, save that for this, so there are arcs and bases. I would just add to that, unfortunately, because of some planning that's been done in the 60s, a lot of that man has been put into preservation and should never be without it. And it's going to be buried in the next generation. Here you get to buy, the average price of a town, over 500,000, 500,000, or a new town. Average household income of over 10,000, they can't buy, they can't buy a new town. So the average person can't buy a home. That outweighs the, or children, that's not what I want.
All right. Now, Mr. Haleka, it's all this time, all those questions he has.
We won't, we won't give.
The thing, the truth is, we can all read this. You're all capable of reading it, and I thank you all for your time, because I know that decides being here and the time you spend here, you spend a lot of time out of here working on your blogs and comments. You take this very serious. There's nothing more important that we do as a planning board than this master plan. This, this stuff like the CCMP, when we make recommendations, it goes to the council and they can change everything that we have. So this document, it's important that we all feel very, very comfortable with it before we push it forward. So I think everything that you put into it, and I think we all have some new ideas tonight that we need to think about, and.
I would like that motion that I talked about. I would love a session with actually Scott and Chris. You both look amazing. I mean, again, I'm taking a lot of stuff you were saying, that would be important. To have this plan drive, I just don't.
We don't have a deadline. I believe, I know there's desire to have it completed, or at least to the council, before CCMP begins in September. But we don't have a set timeframe.
MP is in September. So I think what I'm hearing from the planning board, you feel you need a little time to digest this?
I make this suggestion. Steve, this is to you and your team, which you were working the summer on. But there is a lot that I admit, you know, might be involved in real estate, but that I don't understand some of the terms, some of the things at that point. I personally would love to see us have a few work sessions on, or whether that be one, two, or three, to really be able to ask questions of you. Scott, you do have a lot of knowledge and other people do, but you know, there's, this is a long document and a very important document for the next 10 years. I think in some of our discussions that we were having in the back for, you know, our vote here really means something. Sometimes we know we're political cover for the council or for the county executive, but this is something that is going to affect our county for the next 10 years. Maybe scheduling a couple of meetings, or it might be trying to schedule us all for truly a long afternoon, from 1:00 to 5:00 or something like that, that we want really to do along. But the best that I can, you know, I will try to make myself available, I know I couldn't get on from Las Vegas last week, it was very hard for me, but you know. I'll do my best, I know I'm away on the 15th as well in the country, but you know, I do think that we need some more time to really understand it before this board hopefully really ready to, to approve this for a 10-year plan. That's how I feel.
Well, I think, you think, I think it would probably be good to have the meeting on the 15th and come up with some plans on moving forward?
Like, I guess, Matt, Chair, I would, if in fact the board is looking for, let's pick numbers, two or three more work sessions before actually getting to a voting time. And we're all realistic that as summer hits, people's availability starts to get really jammed. I would suggest or urge consideration for more, not wait two weeks, and then two more weeks, and two more weeks, because then we'll be in October. And all due respect, when CCMP starts, particularly Amy and Jen, they're like, above their eyeballs. And we, so we need to move this more quickly with perhaps a couple of meetings, maybe it's a Tuesday or Thursday, as you do with capital budget or something, a couple hours each. And you know, we can work with you around schedules and make ourselves available, find room and, you know, feed you or whatever. No, I understand, I appreciate, and that's what I'm saying too, that to really drill down more deeply than what you think we are able to today. But I'd also really want to get a little more clarity, and I'm not saying, Scott, that you haven't been clear, but make sure that we're getting, giving you what you want or need. And we can have Jen and others walk through more, in more detail, maybe with more pictures or data points on the, on the desk to actually explain these questions you posed. They may, you know, and we may not ever fully satisfy the questions you have, but to give you at least how our thinking has been and the thinking of others who contributed to this process. So helping us to understand, if you answer A, B, C, and D, this will get us to that next level would be invaluable, because we don't want to go down the roadway and find out we're not getting to where you want to do, so that, as you said, Todd, that you're able then to feel you can make a good decision on whether or not to support one part or another of your plan.
Well, I think, I think the county can determine whether it's legal or not, they can.
We're signing off on it, so.
Well, they can look into that, Todd. So one thing.
Whatever, it seems to me at this point, it's sort of, I'll use the word hung up, and I don't mean that pejoratively, on the data and the mapping. And if those are the two, two of the driving issues right now, as to how nodes are, the walkability issues, you know, then we can, we want to drill down, again, get to the information that's going to be most useful to you, not just trying to explain how we got to where. That's got to be part of it, of course, so you understand why the document is as it is.
I think that 10 years ago, I don't remember having the discussions that we're having now, and I would suggest to you, the two major issues that it's made much more complicated maybe for me, I can't speak for everybody, is both the PUD and the 10-year zoning cycle. These are major changes in our county's history. Since 1970, and I don't know if we've ever had any, but before years, I go, lots of history, as I know of, but we're, so to make those changes.
So to make those changes and sign off on that, what is a big change. I would like to know what the other counties do and why they only do it every eight years. Not just, they are eight years. Because I think ours has worked fairly well. I like hearing from the people, we have to be quiet and not say anything. I don't, I talk at those meetings. I'm very quiet there.
I would say...
You ask it, asking to find it out.
He's retired, remember that?
I think we're going to take a vote on that.
It's like one comment to ours. When things become too crowded and too expensive to live here, people will do what they've been doing the last 50 years. Seasons will follow them if there is a necessary need for them. So it's not like nothing's...
Okay, well, we all understand that. So now, moving forward.
There are obviously a lot of things to speed's point. Where are we going to be next? Definitely sounds like data is an issue. I mean, I think the data will suggest where we start developing. If we can't develop, I think we should spread it out a bit more instead of just preserve communities. And so that's just one of those communities. Where are they going to go? If it's possible for the next session, if, if you just walk through, it doesn't have to be long, I mean 15 minutes, of how you got the data and what that looks like so we can have a better understanding. And then we can take another 15 minutes or whatever to look through the other issues. I mean, I get it, no one's going to vote for it today or next on June 15th. But I'd like to get a real plan and have it.
Well, if we, if we come, we don't come prepared on June 15th and Howard, you can give us the information we can have on, just like Mrs. Narra did. And you say, this is what I'd like, and then this is how I see it solved, then we can vote on each different issue. And then we go as far as we can and then we move forward after that.
I'm not prepared. I don't, I don't think that's a good... Give it this piece. With all the information.
All right. Whatever you guys want to do. You want to just have another informational meeting next time and then see where we are after that?
Well, they've made notes on so many of these issues here. Steve is, when you have made some notes and so on, you have provided some... We are making notes. So my recommendation, we sort of start in the middle at 4:00 PM or 4:30, get this started. Only to be satisfied with a haircut. So that we can have more time to discuss, to clarify. For all we need now, additional clarification. No, no, I'm just saying.
It's like, people say a lot of it is... So can we just pick three to five days? And say, bring this to us, please, on the 15th, some more clarity for that. And it makes sense.
So I'm just saying, is it a four-year, CCMP, is it a eight-year, is it a 10-year? Clarity, yeah.
I'm also going to come and come out the data, same way the data will be.
So the planning board is very, planning staff is made their suggestions. They think it should be ten years. I think some of the state boards, maybe there's some people here that say ten. I think that's going to come to the vote.
Make a vote. All right. That's not important.
Yes, that is a huge vote.
Well, I, I think we do need, I don't think it's going to be like all summer. I think we just need to help ourselves. One to better understand, thinking like, obviously there's a lot of things that I'm going to discuss. We just want to understand it, make sure we're comfortable with assumptions, if there were assumptions. And I, I think we also need the time to go over it. After the terms of these. Scott, I thought you brought up a great point about... You know, making sure that we're following the other mandated things and state requirements and all that stuff that hasn't gotten in here yet. Have the time to really have a hard deliberation, make sure we're putting everything in the group. I don't think we could be more than out of two sessions. I think we can get this done.
This is very quick. Was the planning department that was first to all the stuff that every member of the county... Far too far to meeting to discuss it further? Right. Right. I feel like that there, there was a desire to have it presented. Beijing.
Scott, would you be available to come, come over and...
So I, as far as having an attorney at this, I think they've had their opportunity. And I've also asked that we get no...
It's, nope. We, we can check with their office of law just to, I, I think, to affirm what is, I believe, to be a non-issue. Has, has to be. Then wait. We're, we're comfortable with whatever the board chooses to do. I just want to explain, I just want to state some of the reality that we'd be willing to meet, you know, frequently. And we know that especially now as we get into July, the board doesn't meet in August typically and won't be probably unless you change that up. But July is a vacation month, and so we just recognize keeping the group together for decision-making. June 15th, no, because it's first and third. And, and traditionally, the board is not met on that first Thursday in July because of the fourth. But certainly, those of us who are here would be available...
My, my one big concern truly is that if we go 10 years and we get rid of PUDs generally, that's a statement that is... They're very much more difficult. Now we're in a phase of delay development for 10 years because of COVID. I might be sold on something else 10 years if the PUDs stay pretty much where they are. But there is an opportunity. But I think personally, those are the two main issues that I have that really, I think, delay development in our county.
All right. So what if we, the 27th, it's a Tuesday? The 15th and the 27th?
15th for additional clarifications. And the 27th, they did.
And the 27th, the hope to take items if possible, or be able to see if we're ready or not.
July's...
You have eight, and it's 15.
Well, because part of the question is if Scott is going to meet with... Well, it depends. I mean, since part of the, part of the fulcrum here is the opportunity for Scott to meet and talk through with Jen and others, you know, like what, how did we get here to make sure that there's a greater comfort with either the metrics or do we have to adjust them? I mean, that, that's an option. Not a good one frankly at this stage, but if that's sort of where we end up, that's what we need to do to address concerns. Correct, correct. But I'm saying if, if that's going to be the direction, then that obviously is a different matter. Jen, what do you say? Are you around, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, though.
And then you would start with 15, right?
Or you might have said, Mr. Eric, you might have said...
And, and right now, tentatively on the 27th? Gordon.
I won't be here. I can't be here later. It's like you, it's like a thousand and two. I mean, I don't have to be here. Day off. I had that on camera. Yeah, but like, like, like 14 and whatever other day. Let's finish off.
All right. So just so I, I'm sure, you know, we're, we're having, Chair, that the next meeting's on the 15th. Scott will work with Jen and us to come up with the time that he has so we can walk through some of the questions that are still open. Then when we're reconvening on the 27th, unless, because, I guess accommodating some of the members who will be away before that, to actually reconvene, if you will, the conversation about the issues that are still open. Is that correct?
I, they just, I guess. Maybe one of them's going to bond to you.
Get us all political, might be missing some kind of charter, what the, after the 15th, the feeling that you thought that we could focus on before the meeting, just for something separate.
Well, and that's, I mean, that sort of follows the, the request that if there are issues, just as for today, that get it to us in advance so we can make sure if they're open questions, we could try to answer or at least be prepared, better prepared to answer and lead you through the conversation. Well...
I don't think you guys are going to look at it, so you said...
I've just been advised that three of the five of us sitting up here are not available on the 27th. Possibly four out of five. How about, how about the 28th or the 26th? 28th is a Wednesday, 26th is a Monday. I don't know. You guys are away all week?
We'll have to get that, yes, to see if the room's available, more than anything. We'll see if the room's available.
Nobody else you can see. You have a chat.
The meeting was started, Mark, and it was on the 15th. And it wasn't on the 1st.
Well, I did, again, Matt...
Scott would be tomorrow. What you need is why.
We'll, we'll make sure it's on the website. We'll make sure it's on the website.
It's, it's, yeah. We make sure that it's, I mean, we don't have an obligation to be two weeks' notice, but we give notice as far in advance as we can. but we give notice as far in advance as we can. So now we're looking instead at, well, again, it depends on your schedule, Scott, and your ability to get together with, with folks here. Yeah, that's. You know, I'm, I'm not putting our vacation of the to, of the year as tight, I, I, it's, I realize everybody has scheduling challenges in the summer. We will, first thing in the morning, check to make sure that this room is available, it generally is in the evening, so that should not present a problem, but if we run into any obstacles, we'll let you know right away. Otherwise, we'll anticipate a meeting at four o'clock on June 8th, uh, and we'll work through some of the issues that Scott, hopefully all the issues that Scott has raised. And I once again request that if there are other issues that people now thought about as a result of today's conversation that we need to, for us to work through, is get them through as soon as you can, so we can be best prepared. Yes, sir. Another one? Sure. We can make those in for it, yes, sir.